It's Ashros TV to pick us up live. All right, good evening and welcome to the August 5th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Up first, we do have executive session scheduled for 6 o'clock under Massachusetts General Law, Section 30A, Section 21A 3, meeting with special town council relating to the appeal of 33 Pheasant Lane in East Falmouth. The board will open in public session, vote to enter into executive session, and will return back to public session after a closure of executive session. I think I rambled that all correctly. So, as chair, I am making the determination that the subject of the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation concerning this matter. Discussing it in a public forum would have a detrimental effect of the board's litigation position in this matter, so I will make the motion to enter into executive session under Mass. General Law 30A, Section 21A 3, and then to, then enter back into public session after we conclude executive session.
So, Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All right, so I made the motion, seconded by James, and roll call vote, of course, to enter into executive sessions. We'll start first. TJ Hury, aye?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob Dugan, aye.
James Morse, aye.
All right, good evening and welcome to the August 5th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals here, live and in person at Falmouth Town Hall. I'll introduce the board at this time, and I'll ask you to please silence your cellphones. On my immediate right, your far left is Special Town Council Mike Ajimo. My name is TJ Hury, I'm the Chair of the Board. To my left is Scott Zalinski, who is the Vice Chair. To his left is Bob Dugan, who is the Board's Clerk. And at the end of the table, we have James Morse, who is a full-voicing member. Also with us tonight is Maureen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the Recording Secretary for tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comments should only be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by me and come to the podium. To your left here, we ask you to please state your name and address for the record, along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have. And we also limit public comment to two minutes per person. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and we would make a motion to either deny or prove would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three-to-two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts General Law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So, turning to the agenda for the night, we did have executive session at 6 o'clock. We do have three new hearings, one continuation, and we do have a few items on our open meeting agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion just to take one item briefly out of order, and that was going to be a new hearing. It's number 54-21, Green, 71 Alder Lane in North Falmouth. They have requested a continuance. Letter reads, "Dear Board Members, on behalf of our clients, Brian and Eileen Green, residents of 71 Alder Lane, West Falmouth, Mass., we respectfully ask for a short extension to the next available meeting due to some issues that arose with conservation. Our hearing with them was postponed from 7:21 to 8:04. This will allow us the time to rectify the issues that arose," and that's Sharon Sylvester from Plans and Construction. So, our next continuance date for that would be September 23rd. So, given that, I would make a motion to continue the opening of this hearing to September 23rd, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion was made by Bob to continue this hearing to September 23rd, seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. All right, so if anyone out there is in the crowd for that hearing, it will be held on September 23rd. Back to the top of the order then. We have, under our new hearings, application 53-21, Pheasant Lane LLC, 33 Pheasant Lane in East Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner's determination.
So, application number 53-21, Pheasant Lane LLC, 150 Timothy Bourne Cartway, East Falmouth, Mass., is filed in appeal with the Falmouth Town Clerk pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Sections 8 and 15, and 240-202 of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner's determination, and the subject property is 33 Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, Mass.
All right, and for the applicant, we have Attorney Bealan.
Hi, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name's Kimberly Bealan. I'm an attorney with Moriarty, Troyer, and Malloy, out of Quincy, Massachusetts, and we're here on behalf of the appellant, Pheasant Lane LLC. We're here on an appeal of a decision of the building inspector that ordered the tear-down of a house at 33 Pheasant Lane in East Falmouth, Massachusetts, which was issued in response to an enforcement request that was brought by the zoning board. As an initial matter, I have reviewed town council's opinion letter, in which he opines that this board has jurisdiction to open and act on this appeal. We disagree with that ultimate conclusion, as the board is a previous participant to this action. It's our position that the board has no ability to assess the merits of its own enforcement action. We also disagree with town council's statement that the circumstance does not give rise to a, I want to make sure I get the quote, "reasonable impression that the members will act without bias." The board has publicly taken the position, both in requesting enforcement from the building inspector and in the Van Kuren appeal, which is the 4817 appeal that the board is a party to, that the permit was improperly granted and the structure should be torn down. It's hard to imagine a situation presenting greater opportunity for bias than a circumstance in which this board has publicly requested the very relief that our client now appeals. We will not be addressing the substantive merits tonight, but instead, the presentation will go to the numerous procedural deficiencies in the conduct that form the basis for our appeal. As I said in the notice of appeal, the LLC is under no illusion that this appeal represents an opportunity for an unbiased adjudication and a fair hearing. So, I'll work through our points. The first, the board is not a neutral arbiter. As we've already discussed, the board has an actual conflict. It's the very party that initiated the enforcement request. Even if that does not constitute a technical violation of the conflict of interest laws, which I think is what town council was, was opining to, and we do not concede that, the board has previously advanced opposition to maintenance of the structure on the property. Under the zoning act, Pheasant Lane, our client, is guaranteed a right to review by an impartial zoning board, akin to every other property owner seeking an appeal pursuant to 40A, Sections 8 and 15. By sitting on this request, in which the board steps into the shoes of the building commissioner on the appeal, it is effectively assessing the merits of its own zoning enforcement request. This is a quasi-judicial board, and the board's previous participation eviscerates substantive and procedural due process guarantees that are inherent in the statute. Second, it's the LLC's position that the board lacked authority to seek enforcement in the first instance. The board is a creation of statute, and its powers are clearly enumerated in 40A, Section 14. And I'll note, the introductory remarks tonight also clearly identify what's within the board's authority. 40A, Section 14, says it's to hear and decide appeals in accordance with Section 8, that's what you're doing tonight, to hear and decide applications for special permits, to hear and decide petitions, and to hear and decide appeals from decisions of a zoning administrator. Clearly, 40A, Section 14, does not authorize the board to seek zoning enforcement or institute a zoning enforcement action. In fact, we could not locate one case in the Commonwealth in which the zoning board sought enforcement from a municipal zoning officer. Simply, it does not have the right to do so under the statute. In the first instance, enforcement is in the authority of the building inspector, and the board's position in this case attempts to use serve such authority and empower itself and its volunteer members, you, to pursue subjective enforcement throughout the town. Further, as this case demonstrates, such position wreaks havoc on the appeal procedure, as the board would be a party to numerous enforcement actions in the town. Third, the board's enforcement request is contrary to the, quote, "comprehensive statutory scheme established by 40A." The board's position turns the enforcement paradigm on its head. That paradigm provides that a party seeks enforcement pursuant to 40A, Section 7. If there's unfavorable action, a party withstanding appeals pursuant to 40A, Section 815, to a neutral zoning board of appeals for a fair hearing. The scheme, which is codified in three sections of the Act, ensures that owners and parties and interests are provided a fair opportunity to seek enforcement and a fair hearing. The board's prior participation eviscerates procedural and substantive mechanisms in that comprehensive statutory scheme. The board has made itself a party to the proceeding by seeking enforcement. The absurdity of its conduct is highlighted by the circumstance that would have followed had the request been denied. Under exhaustion principles, the board would have been required to appeal a denial to itself. The fact that the request was allowed does not legitimize otherwise deficient procedure. Fourth, the board's request is an attempt to circumvent its lack of subject matter jurisdiction. This issue is currently pending before the land court a motion, or a motion for summary judgment. It's the LLC's position that Van Kuren lacks standing in his enforcement request that the board previously considered. A lack of standing in that request, well settled, deprives this board of subject matter The building inspector's determination at issue now undermines years of zoning jurisprudence and eviscerates the 40A Sections 8 and 15 standing requirement any time the board is sympathetic to a petitioner. The zoning board has effectively assumed jurisdiction despite the fact that there's no aggrieved person and no individual harmed. Finally, the board's request is untimely, and it's barred by latches. Even if the board had the authority to pursue enforcement, it would be held to the same standard as others in seeking enforcement or appealing a determination. The board was undeniably aware of the building inspector's August 2019 determination, but did not appeal it. It's undeniably aware of it because Mr. Van Kuren did appeal it. He amended his application at that time to appeal the decision, and that amendment, I believe, happened on September 3rd, 2019. The SJC, the highest court in the state, clearly said in Connors v. Nino that a party seeking enforcement is required to appeal if they're aware of a decision within the 30 days. The board cannot use an enforcement request as an alternate remedy. This board was clearly aware of Mr. Palmer's determination, and I think it was in August 2019, his determination that the property or the structure should not be torn down. It did not appeal that determination. Likewise, even if this, this board could pursue an enforcement request, that request would be barred by latches. Van Kuren testified, in connection with the pending land court appeal, that he shared his concerns about the property with the board in February 2019. Despite this board's knowledge and involvement in the case, it did not seek enforcement for over two years. Latches is a delay affecting disadvantage, including the construction of buildings. That's well settled in the law. With the exception of Van Kuren, this board disavowed any particular interest in the zoning board proceeding. And the LLC was aware only that Van Kuren, a party which it understood to lack standing, had raised concerns. The board cannot disavow any interest, and then subsequently, two years later, seek enforcement. In sum, it's the LLC's position that the board has no authority to act as it did to request enforcement, and we would request that the tear-down order be overturned. Any questions?
Thank you, Attorney Bealan.
You're welcome.
So, I just wanted to confirm that your presentation tonight was addressing the procedural deficiencies. You weren't intending on reaching the substantive issues, the factual issues regarding the appeal?
We don't appeal on that basis. Our appeal, it's very clear what the appeal is related to, is the procedural deficiencies and this board's lack of standing.
Thank you. Scott, anything? Bob?
I guess my other question is, so if, if you're only appealing on lack of standing, then you have no disagreement with the statements made in Palmer's letter of May 13th?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I disagree with, with Rob Palmer's letter. But I'm not here to discuss the merits. I'm here to discuss the appeal that's brought before you.
So, if you disagree with his letter, what is your disagreement on either of his points?
The disagreement is that he did not, your board did not have the, the ability to seek enforcement. I'm not here to talk about the merits. I'm not, I mean, you can ask me all night. I'm not, I'm not discussing it further.
Okay, well, I would be, I'd be interested in hearing the merits, so that's all I have.
James?
For clarification, counsel, are you aware of the determination of State Ethics Commission as to whether or not this board is able to hear?
I'm aware that the State Ethics Commission agreed with Attorney Duffy's analysis.
And, so this is, your position is that this could be a case of first impression, then, as to whether or not this board has the authority to do what, and I guess the other question is, don't appellate courts routinely remand back to the same agency to make modified findings, and not inconsistent with the superior court's ruling?
An appellate court or the superior court, you're saying?
In general.
A superior court remands decisions back to a municipal board, sure.
I'm listening to your argument, you're saying that this body, even if it was remanded, were not capable, because you've heard something before, of making a fair determination based on the merits?
No, that's not true. Your position, if a board, if a matter was remanded to a board for a different inquiry, let's say you didn't list, you know, sufficient findings of fact or analyze conditions properly, certainly, you're not a previous party to the, to the action. Here, you are a party to the action because you sought the very enforcement that the board, that the building inspector had issued. It's two different things.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Attorney General, I don't know if you had any questions?
Any public comments?
Yeah, we'll turn it to a public comment. Public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? All right, not seeing any. Back to the board. Attorney General, anything?
No. I think you can move to close.
Yeah, motion to close.
Second.
All right, motion to close made by Scott and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearings closed, no more testimony may be taken. And what would be the board's pleasure?
You know, when we've heard these appeals before, we always go on merits of the case, and you're kind of handcuffed, where you can't discuss merits of the case. We've got a, we've got a letter submitted by a building commissioner. They're asking to overturn, and they have no response to the points made in the building commissioner's letter.
I'd agree.
So, without those points, I don't, I don't see how we could uphold an appeal for the applicant.
Understood. Anyone else? All right. Will there be a motion then?
So, then I'll make a motion to deny the appeal by the applicant based on non-discussion of any merits in the case?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before you take the vote, I just, I want to make sure that you've made a positive finding also, right? There's no discussion of merits, but, but have you made a finding as to the buildability of the lot?
Would we, would we need to go there with the?
I just want to know if you're going to put that on the record or not. I think you did that in the last appeal, so maybe, so maybe that's covered, but.
Were there no offhand if we did that in the last?
I actually, I didn't hear the comment from that end, so.
Oh, sorry. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, the comment was whether you wanted to include in this decision anything about the buildability of the lot.
Well, let's put the findings in from the building commissioner's letter. The applicant notated no.
Want to reopen if you go into?
Yeah, I make a motion reopen.
Second.
All right, so motion to reopen was made by Scott, seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, modified to list the reasons in the building commissioner's letter dated 5/13/2021. The applicant notated no for ZBA decisions on the property when in fact there are ZBA decisions on the property which state the lot was unbuildable. Two, the lot doesn't meet current minimum lot size for RC District. It is not entitled to any grandfathering protection in the zoning bylaw or General Law's Chapter 40A, subsection 6.
You got to put in the unwillingness of counsel, of the applicant's counsel to speak on the issue of the standings.
Those are findings that the, did the applicant's counsel?
I wouldn't put in his unwillingness so that no new evidence was offered.
All right.
All right, anything else?
I don't know, I think we should also put in there that they refused to discuss any merits in the case.
That's fine.
That's what he.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Scott and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
So, motion didn't deny the appeal for all the reasons we just discussed.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thanks. Thank you.
Good night, counsel.
Good night.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, up next, we have, we took 54-21 out of order, so up next, we have application 55-21, Freitas, trustees 150 Birch Lane in North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow alterations to the non-conforming single-family dwelling to include a front porch, screened-in porch, and a second-floor addition.
So, application number 55-21, William T. and Lenora K. Freitas, trustees, 170 Woodburn Street, Naedic, Mass. So, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to allow alterations for the non-conforming single-family dwelling to include a front porch, a screened porch, a screened-in porch, and a second-floor addition on subject property known as 150 Birch Lane, North Falmouth, Mass. All right, from ConCom, the applicant has filed a request of a determination of applicability, which is on the agenda for July 21st, 2021 conservation hearing. From Health, a five-bedroom septic system was installed in June of 2021. Health has no issues of the project, and we did get a copy of the certificate of compliance. For a five-bedroom septic system, there was a discrepancy in the application. It mentioned it was a four-bedroom system. From Fire Department, no comment. They have no issues with the project, actually, they have no issues with the project as drawn. From Engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Birch Lane is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town departments. The project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way, and they do recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Assessor's department has no comment. Planning has no comment. From Cathala Water, the water service in Maine are on the plans as required. The existing home has a one-inch service fed from a 10-inch main in Birch Lane. The water meter must be installed in the renovated home, if not already the case. And that's all we have for referrals.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, William and Lenora Freitas of 150 Birch Lane. They're here tonight before you seeking alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. 150 Birch Lane is located in North Falmouth, within Wild Harbor Estates. The lot size is 15,500 square feet, and it's in a residential B zoning district. Presently, there's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 3,651 square feet. The existing structure is non-conforming in a number of ways. It's non-conforming to rear yard setback being 2.6 feet, where 10 is required. Lot coverage by structures being 23.55, where 20% is allowed by right, and up to 25% by special permit. It's also non-conforming to lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking being 42.25%, where 40% is allowed by right. The applicant's purchased this property late 2020, and proposing alterations in order to improve the use of the dwelling for their family. Specifically, they propose removing a significant portion of the rear deck, the enclosure of some of that existing deck space, the creation of a small front porch, and a small second-story addition, which will allow for reconfiguration of existing space, as well as the addition of two new bedrooms and an office. As Mr. Dugan noted, there was an error in my, in my application. I noted four bedrooms as opposed to five. My inability to count bedrooms continues to haunt me, and I apologize. Just recently, the applicants did install a new five-bedroom Title V system, in anticipating a question by Mr. Zalinski. The leaching field for that system is, in fact, an H20 system design. The result of this proposal, the rear yard setback is improved from 2.6 feet to 5.8 feet. The lot coverage by structures will be decreased from 23.55 down to 22.09%. And actually, with the issuance of a special permit that's been requested, it will be eliminated as a nonconformity. And the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will likewise be reduced from 42.25 down to 40.77%. The ridge height of the structure will increase from the existing ridge height of 15 feet, 10 inches, up to 24 feet, 8 and 1/2 inches, which is well below the 35 feet that's allowed. This property is in an AE15 flood zone, and the proposed work will constitute a significant improvement. As opposed to many of the applications we see where people are seeking to tear down and rebuild the houses when that happens, they're looking to bring this existing structure into compliance. To do so, they'll be removing all habitable space from the basement and relocating the mechanicals to the first floor above the base flood elevations. The first floor is set at elevation 16 and 1/2, which is in compliance with FEMA regulations. Due to the existing conditions, this will require a special permit under 243C and 24069E. Under 243C, the board may allow the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, provided that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. In order to determine that, the board is asked to consider the standards of 240216, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, we have no new nonconformity being created. All the existing nonconformities will either be improved or eliminated. As I noted, the rear yard setback will be improved. It won't create any new dimensional nonconformities, it will improve those, that rear yard setback and the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking as well as the non-conforming lot coverage by structure. There are no adverse effects here, certainly none which would overbalance the beneficial effects that we've described. I believe this project meets the requirements of 243C, 24069E, and 240216. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have at this time. If there are no questions or if we're able to address them, I do believe that the board can and should grant a special permit.
Alright, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? We'll start on the floor. And James, anything?
I have no questions. It hit everything that you possibly ask for a project like this.
Sounds good. Bob?
Only question is, are they going to add flood vents, right, to the foundation?
Yep, the basement plans note that there'll be flood vents per engineering requirements.
I think that's all I have.
Alright, Scott? Nothing? Alright, nothing for me? Public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Anyone out there at all? Alright, not seeing anyone. Back to the board.
Make a motion. Make a motion close.
Go ahead, Bob.
Alright, motion closed made by Scott and Bob. Is that a second?
Give to James.
Sure, alright, give it to James. James seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve the conditions.
Second.
Alright, motion approved with conditions made by Bob and seconded by James.
Get as fast as Ed.
Who, me?
It's going to be erased to the seconds. So they're going to be bringing the home into compliance with flood zone regulations. They're going to be ruining all the habitable space from the basement, and will be installing flood vents. There was a new Title V system installed in May of 2021 for five bedrooms.
243C.
Yep, it's an H20 tank, too. They're in AE15 flood zone. First floor is at 16 and 1/2 feet. They submitted a lot comparison worksheet. It falls within the range. Rear yard setback is currently 2.6, that's improving to 5.8. Structure, parking, and paving, 23.55 to 20, improving to 22.09. Total height is 24 8 and 1/2 inches.
240216.
Yeah, 243C, 24069E, 240216, not substantially more detrimental.
Nonconformities decreased or eliminated in keeping with the neighborhood.
Project's keeping with the neighborhood. There were no letters of objection filed, correct?
No, I mean, I don't know if you have to put this in here or not, but when you were notating the file, there just was a typo error. It said that 25 foot is required for the, for the rear yard setback versus the 10. And you may, you may also notate in case someone's reviewing the file later on that it is a four-bedroom, a five-bedroom Title V versus the four bedrooms on the application for the Title V itself.
Alright, anything else for findings?
No.
Conditions?
Per plans, no habitable space allowed in the basement to comply with flood zone regulations. Oh, we should put, um, so we don't have anything from Concom because they went in front of Concom, so maybe just put that in the findings. And then in the conditions, put that they need to meet any.
They did issue an RDA last night.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
So they have to meet anything in the Concom? There were, oh, if the water meter is not in the house currently, it has to be relocated into the house?
Now working hours, our normal working hours, days and times.
Yeah, insert those.
Numbering of the residents?
Yeah, they didn't ask for it this time, which is funny, so it must already have been numbered. And they have to have dry wells for the, any of the roof runoff.
Nice soils there, huh, Mike? Nice soils over there.
No, I mean, just put a finding in there that the plans show four bedrooms plus an office. The office would probably be considered a bedroom in Title V, but it's covered by the five-bedroom system.
Alright, anything else for conditions?
No.
Conditions?
Per plans, no habitable space allowed in the basement to comply with flood zone regulations. Oh, we should put, um, so we don't have anything from Concom because they went in front of Concom, so maybe just put that in the findings. And then in the conditions, put that they need to meet any.
They did issue an RDA last night.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
So they have to meet anything in the Concom? There were, oh, if the water meter is not in the house currently, it has to be relocated into the house?
Now working hours, our normal working hours, days and times.
Yeah, insert those.
Numbering of the residents?
Yeah, they didn't ask for it this time, which is funny, so it must already have been numbered. And they have to have dry wells for the, any of the roof runoff.
Nice soils there, huh, Mike? Nice soils over there.
No, I mean, just put a finding in there that the plans show four bedrooms plus an office. The office would probably be considered a bedroom in Title V, but it's covered by the five-bedroom system.
Alright, anything else for conditions?
No, sir.
No?
Alright, so that was motion approved with conditions made by Bob, seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Alright, up next we have the continuation of application 50-20, Village at.
So I have a question. Is our, um, do you have your guy here?
Let's see.
Your review?
Your review?
Yeah. Do you want to?
Take a break?
Are we going to, are we going to?
So you want to take the open?
Yeah, do you want to, yeah, maybe do your administrative? If we pair an opportunity besides, you moved faster than I anticipated.
Okay, so.
Careful what you wish for.
So then I'll make a motion to take an open meeting, the open meeting item out of order, which is the board administrative approval, 66-21, to check a trustee, 18 Gunning Point Road, West Falmouth, to install a free-standing radio antenna.
Alright, so motion to take that out of order. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, but I'll give that one to James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Alright, so we are taking the board administrative approval out of order. So we did receive this material earlier this week. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from the board about it?
No, I mean, he's relocated the tower, looked like it was the backyard. I don't know what. I mean, the only reason they're here is because of.
So there's a slight increase to lot coverage by structure because they're going to have a base for the antenna, but the, other than that, the antenna's allowed by right.
They would have allowed it by right anyways.
Which makes, which makes it safer. The bigger the base on that thing, the better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think it's better and.
The area that's provided, set in on the plot plan is to provide for antenna coverage. But the, you know, it's not a substantial antenna. It should be a picture in there.
And then it really, there's no noise issues, anything anyways with those kind of things. Alright, I would make a motion to approve the administrative approval for the ham radio antenna not exceeding 50 feet in height.
I'll second it.
Alright, so motion was made by Bob to approve, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Well, Noreen, that helped on time, right?
Uh, minutes?
Can we take a brief break?
Mike, you're going to have to.
Take a break?
Yeah, because they're not here yet, right? We need to.
Alright.
Take a five, have you, have you heard from them?
Alright, Noreen? Yeah?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break, and then she can give a call and see.
Alright, we'll take a five-minute break. Alright, we are back. Thank you for waiting. We will start off with the continuation of application 50-20, Village at Brick Hill LLC, 511 Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to raise existing building, buildings and construct 32 single-family dwellings, eight units to be affordable. Voting members on this, myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zelinski. Ed Van Kuren is not with us tonight, but I believe James has participated in all previous hearings on this matter, so we'll be appointing him as a voting member tonight. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Paul Glenn.
If it comes to a vote, have you already made that announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Glenn, I'm here representing the applicant, Michael Boselli, Village at Brick Hill Road. And just, did you say there's a fifth member watching tonight or the 10 vote?
No, no, so there's just four of us, but under the 40B comprehensive rules, all you need is a simple majority anyway, so.
Okay, well, thank you. So, as you know, this has been going on for a year, so I won't go back to the beginning in the interest of time, but the last time we were here, we were here June 17th, and there were some issues that board members wanted addressed. And we had submitted materials to Mr. Yegation who's here tonight beforehand, but really just beforehand, so he didn't have an opportunity to respond in time for the June 17th hearing. So we didn't do very much then. But on June 24th, he, he sent us a very comprehensive response to what had been, would have been submitted to the board, to you. And, and then, and then we should really start there. With that, June 24th, he sent, he sent a very, a very thorough response to the whole project really at that time. On July 14th, I submitted a copy of that to the board where I highlighted the nine issues that Mr. Yegation was interested in, that he felt we hadn't dealt with. And I think that was a result of his own work and some of the questions that board members had. Did everybody get a chance to read the Mr. Yegation's June 24th letter and my, and my July 14th one?
Yep.
Okay, alright, so there were, there were nine issues that Brian brought up. Before we address them, I'll just continue on with the, with the dates here. So Brian, Brian raised those issues, and then we responded. And on July 24th, he sent us another response. So Brian has been very helpful since the last meeting, responding to us quickly, not, and getting things done. And, and there's been a lot of communications back and forth since, including today, where, and I think where we are is all nine issues that Brian brought up in his June 24th letter have been satisfied to, to the satisfaction of Brian and to the Water Department was one of the issues. So, Mr. Chairman, should we go through them, or did you have particular things? There are nine of them. I'm not sure how you'd like me to present evidence to you.
Well, if you want to address each of them, go right ahead.
Okay, alright. So why don't we, why don't we do that? So I think the best way to do that is my July 14th letter to you, and I have, you really need Brian's letter next to you while you're doing it. That's the letter of June 24th. Yeah. And I have them all. So. Alright, now, so why don't we start with one? Okay, here's that. Alright, I, I felt that items one and two were items that we had talked about. Those are items, you're going to pick up trash and you're going to plow the roads. And he just made a note that we hadn't dealt with that. We think that we did back early on, sometime last summer or fall. I can remember Ken saying to us, you mean the paved portion of these roads is exactly the same as a traditional subdivision? And Mr. Boselli answered, yes. And that seemed to be the end of it, that there wouldn't be any more questions on whether or not the town would plow or pick up trash. And I, I just argued tonight that that would be very unfair for the town and the affordable housing development to provide fewer services than you would on a traditional subdivision. So those are one or two. I don't, I don't think Brian had, I'm not sure. You can talk to him. I don't think he has an engineering opinion about that. That would just be more of a board's decision. Now, item number three, which is on his page four, he wanted an operations and maintenance plan. And I think the, that has been satisfied by your July 24th letter. Am I correct? Where he said, we provided, Walter Herman, Al, and Michael provided information to Mr. Yegation on how the place would be maintained. And Brian in his July 29th letter says BSC has no further concerns. The applicant has submitted a revised long-term pollution prevention plan. So that would be three. So I'm still on the June 24th letter, page four, but I just referred to the July 29th letter, page, page what? Page, page three. So going back to June 24th, the June 24th letter, this is the Water Department. So I think we have four, four, five, and six are on the Water Department. Mr. Zelinski was concerned about this, it was a safety issue, was there enough water pressure out there in case two houses caught on fire one particular day? We thought we had already answered that question June 17th when we were here. The applicant gave a lot of testimony how we did a, we did a water pressure study, and he had talked to multiple fire departments around the area. But you, and, and the pressure was adequate, but you asked, no, could you, we'd like something from the town Water Department. We, they agree to that. So, you know, Mike has always been very accommodating, I think. He went out and did another test. And this test, you know, I, I don't understand the engineering, but this test was kind of, Mike had to pass it with one, with one arm tied behind his back really. They had to shut down some of the pumps the days it was being tested to make sure if that happened, then there'd still be enough water pressure. So that happened on Monday. They actually, they had the pump, pump shut down, and they did a test, and it came out more than adequate, the water pressure, on Monday. So this all happened really this morning. The, Noreen and Ashley were very helpful, and so was Cathal, I think, is, and Cathal in his email from this morning says, based on the document, they will be responsible for the performance of the design if, if built in terms of meeting the required fire and domestic flows. Now, well, first he says, I have reviewed the document as a stand by an engineer, and we accept it as proof of the design's compliance with our standards. One sentence, he says, it's fine. And the engineer, Mike went out and hired a specialist, Amory, you know, Pat Brandon from Amory. This is what they do. They, they don't, they're not civil engineers, they study water pressure. He went out and hired them, and they did this work, and it's, came out to be the, to the satisfaction of Cathal at the Water Department there. So you can tell Mike's been trying very hard. Alright, now. So then we have, no, that's five, too. Four and five and six are all about the water. Well, no, four and five are about the water. We dealt with both of them together. That's the water pressure. Number six is a technical thing. There's a reference in the. There's a reference in the zoning bylaws that says certain things have to be designed, or the subdivision standards, certain things have to be designed to Land Court standards. This isn't Land Court property. This is unregistered property. And Mike has done it, has done all the traverse standards, traverse sta, tables, the way that he always does for any subdivision in Falmouth. And I, I think that that has satisfied Brian at this point. Brian may have something else to say there, but I think that has satisfied Brian. And I also asked for a waiver on it, too, you know, could I, it, it seems to be overkill, that we don't need to do that, right? And.
What needs, what, what are you describing as overkill?
The, so, when a subdivision plan is presented to you, there's a lot of requirements under the subdivision regulations. One of them says they have to be done to Land Court standards. I think the planning board consistently weighs that, especially when it's not Land Court. This, this is not Land Court property, it's unregistered. Getting the plan approved at Land Court is a multi-year process sometime, where they study every little thing. That has not been the practice of the Falmouth Planning Board, to require anything to that type of standard.
I, I did also verify with Town Engineering that they do not require that. They were fine with waiving that, so.
Okay, so, so that's consistent, you know, with it there.
So the traverse tables, too, right, the wall tables?
And I, we have it in there, that's one on the list of waivers, to waive that. And now, number seven is more test pits. Do I have that right? More, more test pits is number, size, location, of different drainage, and, and things like that. We think that the, all this extra testing is done normally after you get in there and you're ready to do your work, after the subdivision's been approved. You go out and dig additional test pits. And I, I added that to the list of conditions I thought the board might have, might apply to the decision, where we say, "We will not, we do not expect a building permit until Michael has performed these additional tests like he normally would in a normal subdivision."
For septic.
That's for number seven, that's right.
Yes, so, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
If you don't, if, if you don't do all the testing for all the lots prior to it, how do you control the cost if you have to do additional work if the soils don't prove out?
Yeah, so Mike, Mike can answer that. There was back and forth in that today. Would you like Mike to answer that?
If that's, we'll get.
Hey, for the record, Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I, I read and understood Brian's concern. These are, there are two septic systems, they're not individual for each lot.
Right.
One serves 14 dwellings, and one serves the other 14. When we started our initial work to study this project, we went out and did test holes randomly. We had no idea where septic systems were gonna be. But we, so we excavated, we found topsoil, thin layer of topsoil, thicker layer of subsoil, you know, and then we broke through the parent material, which is like coarse sand and gravel.
C3.
Beautiful, high permeability, low, very rapid perk rates, on all the test holes that we did. Now, they weren't, they weren't where the, we didn't know where we were gonna put the leaching fields yet, but we know the soils throughout the site are consistent, and they're very permeable. So we also.
Out of any of those, Mike, you didn't run into any modeling anywhere else? So you're, you're, my only question was, we don't have to get too complicated with it. My only question was, how would you handle the monetary aspect of it without doing them where the fields are? Because you know how expensive that could get, and the off chance you run into glacier till, whatever, and have to strip that out, or move it, or whatever, there would be a financial.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So what we're gonna do, we consulted the Barnstable County Soil Mapping Reference. And the whole area where we are, from Sandwich Road to almost Route 28 West, is consistently the same type of soil on the maps. What we plan to do, if, if the project's approved, is when the road is, when they start to cut the road in, we're gonna go do perk tests right on the, right on the sites. And those soils will be consistent, there won't be like a pocket of glacial till. We expect we'll find the same depth and layers. If, if, if we don't, we have to regroup and, and look at the septic system. Now, we could do that, I don't think that rises to the level of needing to continue a hearing to do it. So we, we are very, very, very confident the soil's gonna be consistent, because of our local knowledge. And the fact that we did them, we did them all in places that are far away from each other, just not right where we're gonna put the septic systems.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. And then number eight had to do with, back to, back to counting. Number eight had to do with drainage. And Walter Hermannau was the engineer. He, I think he appeared at least at one Zoom meeting, and he submitted material to Brian on drainage. And as a result of that, Brian said he has no further, no further concerns on the drainage aspect. And nine is the same thing as Michael was just talking about there. You know, we're looking for a condition that we have to do it right. The test pits, seven and nine, it seemed to be the same things that Michael was just talking about now. Just not, not, so, I went through the June 24th letter.
Oh, you understand my concern with that, because with something this dense, if something had to be changed, then plans would have to be changed. You know, if you gotta go somewhere else, if, if, if the odd occurrence happened.
Yeah.
If you had plenty of room to do this, it would be one thing, but it is so densely packed with structures, these, these plans would be approved, you know, you'd kind of, I, I trust Mike.
Yeah. Well, Mike, it has to be built according to Title V standards, you know.
I understand.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it, so, I mean, that's a risk, that's risk developers take, isn't it? You know, all kinds of things. You know, viruses can hit, interest rates can go up, you know, and, and you can hit rocks. You know, I, I mean, that's a risk developers take when they take on a project, and.
How, how much, how much does, does a perk test cost?
It's, it's not expensive. It, it's, it's a, I mean, we could go out there Monday and do test holes.
I'm just, I was curious.
Oh, it's a, to do the test holes, we would have to hire an excavator that can dig like 20, 22 feet deep, blast through the woodland to these spots, we'd have to stake them first. So the overall cost would probably be, you know, $3,000, $4,000 when you factor in the surveying. When we know, I mean, I've never been so confident about what the soils are gonna be. If we were in a different part of town, I would not be saying what I'm saying, but, well, we, every test hole we did, we did like six. They were, they were like identical, almost. And they, we just skipped over, we didn't know we were putting the leaching fields at that point, so we did them like randomly.
I, I understand, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, Mr. Chairman, I'm.
No worries.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so, so we're here, and we, you can see that the mics have bent over backwards, I, I think, to answer really every, every question. It's a good project, it's in a good location, no place is perfect, but no project is perfect. But this is a good project in a good location, next to the high school, next to some recreational facilities that are gonna be built now. They've done their best to satisfy every concern. He spent about six months to a year studying if he could do rental housing before this was even submitted, because that's what a few people from town asked him to do. He's really done everything he can to make this a good, a good project. And we'd, we'd ask you to approve it and close the hearing tonight.
All right.
You know, and if I could ask you a question? Now, if, if you close the hearing, it's, I know that means no new testament, no new evidence comes in, but can you still ask us questions? Can we be of assistance in that, or?
Typically, when we close the hearing, we, we, we close it 100%.
100%. So it's a long, you have two engineers here tonight. It's a, there are a lot of details, I understand why everybody's concerned, there are a lot of details to it. Should, should we have the discussion first, or?
If, if we left the file open, not for testimony. You still can't get, you still can't get anything that way, right?
Why don't you hear from Mr. Yegation?
Yeah, we'll still have to hear from Mr. Yegation, right?
And then decide what you want.
Yeah, I have one quick question before we do that, to the administrator, so the town is saying they will not do snow and trash?
No, 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 we, we actually have an update, and.
It's just not on this one, though. So they are agreeing to the.
Yeah, as of August 3, we have confirmation that the town is going to do trash pickup at the driveways.
Okay.
Snow removal.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was up there.
You know, you'll need, obviously, inspections along the way, street opening, permit. They did ask about a name for your roadway.
Josiah's Way or some, it, it's right on the plan itself.
And then they also asked if you were going to do a development sign.
We submitted one, when?
We, we submitted one about a year ago, and Mike, do, do you have it on your thumb drive to show them? It, it's a rock that will say Village at Brickhill, and then there'll be landscaped around it. You know, that, that, that was, that was submitted a long time ago, but this. So what would you like us to do about that?
I'd just send it again, 'cause I, I, it may have been submitted, but I haven't seen the file anywhere. The files are so thick now, so maybe just re-send it.
I have a lousy black and white of it right here with me.
You can submit that.
Okay. Somewhere, I don't have that many papers. Well, I'll, I'll submit it, we'll submit it and then call it to you, how about that? Look, look, but it, it's, I mean, it's, Mike, he has to make this a nice, pleasant-looking project development. The, the whole thing depends on him being able to sell the market rate units, and he, so he wants a nice sign out there to.
No, just so we can refer to something, that's all, it's more of a referral.
All right. Shall we hear from Mr. Yegation?
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Glenn.
Okay.
Mr. Yegation?
Good evening. My name, for the record, my name is Brian Yegation, I'm a professional engineer for BSC Group. So yes, I, I agree with pretty much, mostly everything which Paul has, which Mr. Glenn has alluded to. He went through the nine items that were outstanding from my June 24th letter. And then, as he also mentioned, I did prepare a July 29th letter. In the July 29th correspondence, which you do have in your packets, there were still two items which I felt were outstanding. And those have been resolved as of, you know, as of this morning. I just wanna say that there was, you know, there's been very good communication. I, I found the applicants to be, you know, very responsive to all the concerns that we raised. Only one thing I wanted to clarify, and it's an easy mistake to make, when, when he was going over them, item seven was actually, I had, I had missed something on during my review of the plans, but we needed to, we needed to show, or show the location of any private wells that existed, either on the property or within 100 feet. And that was added to the plans, I think maybe on the, the prior, the prior iteration of them, so.
So they, so they have addressed the.
They have, there was, there's one well on the locus, it's further than 150 feet, I believe, from the closest leaching field, so no, no further concerns there. That was, that was item seven. Number nine, which we talked about the most, was the, was the test pits. But yeah, I, I had no, no outstanding items, they've, they've addressed everything, all the drainage concerns. I do think it would be prudent for the board to put, you know, standard conditions. The biggest one would obviously be anything dealing with the septic system, Title V, it's a state requirement. And, and anything else that, you know, in terms of the signage. But everything else seems to be fine. And Mr. Katow, I did see the correspondence from Public Works regards to their satisfaction with the, with the eight-inch. They did, you know, as he mentioned, the, the applicants did undertake another fire flow test, this one with one of the pumps off, which is, which is good. It just gives you an added level of assurance that there would be press, you know, adequate residual pressure in the event of a, of a fire. So I don't have any further concerns, but I'd be happy to answer, you know, any questions that you had about it.
Thank you, Mr. Yegation. Any questions from the board for Mr. Yegation?
No, and there's no concerns over any of the waivers requested then?
Nope, everything, I had no concerns over any of the waivers. And they did, in fact, everything which we felt should be a request, they have subsequently addressed as, in updating their list of waivers.
Your satisfaction?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, any follow-up questions for the board?
I don't have any follow-up questions, but does the admin, does the administrator have any issues that you can think of? That you had any concerns with at all?
All right, turn it to public comment then. Any questions, comments, or concerns from any members of the public out there? All right, seeing none, that's the board.
Motion to close.
All right, motion to close by Bob, and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. Sure, discussion? Um. Sure, or, or just a brief comments?
Yeah.
I, I think what we have finally before us is great plans. I know that the applicant and the applicant's representative worked hard with the town, and with Mr. Yegation and representatives from ZBA. I think it's a pretty fine project and a good location in town. I know they worked hard and made many revisions over the, almost, I think, about the past year. It's definitely appreciated, and we have a good landscaping plan, good houses, and it will add.
All the safety concerns have been.
All the safety concerns that the board had earlier have been addressed. And it'll certainly add to affordable housing challenges needed and appreciated, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good location, too. I know there was some comments by planning or something before about the Y next door, but I think the Y next door makes it a better location.
Centrally located, it's next to the high school.
I just think that's such a plus to have a Y next door.
And you can't press down on that shared access until that happens. I mean, that would be unfair for us to.
Right.
Have them enter into negotiations with something that may or may not happen on their butter.
Well, who knows, the Y might have to become before us.
Well, no, they, they would have to come, that's exactly right.
And I think it's a big plus, this is the first one, it actually has submitted all the water tests in advance, which I think was a huge plus.
Absolutely.
Applicants engineer worked excellent with the peer engineer, that's always a plus.
The synchronicity that took place towards the end of this project to bring it home shows that they, number one, they know what they're doing, number two, their willingness to work outside the box.
Certainly, committed to the project, and.
Yeah, so that, that gives you a, a good sense of, that'll get done right and by the book. So I'd be in favor.
Excellent.
Yeah, I would, too, I don't think there's an issue, no. We can add anything on the conditions, so if, so then I would make a motion to ask the administrator to draft a positive approval.
I'll second.
All right.
With conditions.
Of course, there'll be a few.
I mean, there's a lot to go through, so.
You wanna start us off?
What was your vote? You wanna vote the motion first, and?
Sure, all right, so.
So motion toward the administrator to draft a, a positive approval?
All right, so that was made by Bob, and seconded by James.
I'll second it.
Oh, it was, it was already seconded by James?
Oh, that's right.
Remember, Ed Speed. Speed here going forward.
Yeah, 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 Ed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, so do we want to direct Noreen or?
Yeah, so Noreen, I mean, I think, I think you've got most of the information, everything that, you know, we've got all the waivers listed, so that's easy enough. I, I think we should put in the findings that the peer engineer was satisfied with all the information that was submitted. We should put in the findings about the water testing done.
They did, they did water testing twice to satisfy our.
You know, the general description, the thirty-two dwellings, eight which will be affordable.
They've made positive negotiations or, or made ground with their butters.
The town will accept to do trash removal and snow removal. We can break down all the landscaping and everything else once we, you know, we go through everything from here.
We're in sync with our, our peer review engineer and they're in total in sync with requirements.
We really didn't touch upon it, but at least as far as the landscaping goes, they did submit some tasteful supplemental, I'll say, of that project on the South Shore. I forget what town.
You can add that in there. And then the, put a separate finding regarding that they submitted those traverse figures on the wells. Because we have other projects that are in these agricultural areas that are trying not to do it and I mean, out of all the areas in town, the agricultural areas need that done. Uh, covenants, premises, premises. They've got a maintenance plan. We can, we can refer to the maintenance plan. We have the signage information. Paul can submit the the signage he discussed tonight. Yeah, everything else is here. The, the normal hours of operation for the construction. The general breakdowns we usually do with prior to, you know, prior to building permit during occupancy.
Do we have any, anything on the demo end of it? Do we require anything for that? Got to have a permit.
The question is, you know, if they encounter anything, they'll have to, I guess, deal with board housing.
So we could, yeah.
Environmentally.
And also notify the board if that occurs.
Yeah, but that, that should be part of that permit, you know, by just, by just applying for that permit, there's a list that they have to abide by, which takes care of those concerns anyway.
The changes of the.
Right.
Are the, the covenants that would be submitted to town council? Prior to the occupancy permits?
Do you have to put it, it backs up to town own land and define?
Yeah, I mean, we can, yeah, we can just, we can put that in, what it backs up to, that there's a possible proposed Y next door as well as the town land behind with the school. Also the shade trees for the, you know, the street trees, et cetera, the lighting, that bus shelter.
All right. The proposed list of conditions that the applicant provided as a whole.
The updated, yeah, and the updated waivers list, which is the last one that we received.
Where the town is in a butter, I'm assuming, and conservation is as well, that they will probably have someone from the town, they have an arborist, who will probably want to walk that property line.
We can add what we did in the other ones, too. They have an arborist from the town, also the, the whole thing we use about the, the peer reviewers management of the project.
And the.
The inspections are done while everything is open. You know, the soil erosion, sediment controls, the section 99 for the numbers posting.
Anything else?
No, I mean, I think that gives enough of the basics and then we can, as we go by it at the next hearing, we can always make revisions at the time if we need to.
Sure.
Yeah, they finish this up, right?
Yep. We should probably list on there, too, the, which, the proposed affordable units, which ones on the map.
Yes.
And Noreen, I'll defer to you in terms of, what's the next best date for
It's going to be September.
Review and possible vote?
So you have another 40B draft that you're doing on the ninth, so I guess it would have to be the 16th. All right.
And then we don't, um, uh, 61721. So we're okay time-wise, right? 33927. As far as putting the decision, we don't need any extension or anything, right? The last date I have on, on this one says.
Yeah, it, it might be worth requesting an extension just to have the review of the draft.
Yeah, because.
Open that back up.
We might have to open it. So do you know what date?
Because you're already passed, I think. So you, you're already, I'm sure you're already passed.
For an extension.
The typical timeline. So I would just ask them for an extension to, because here, you're, you're at August today, right? So I would ask them for an extension to September to review the draft, which would be what, 916?
So 16s, would you go to the next date, just so we cut it?
Yeah, yeah.
When did those go down? Oops. Do we need to reopen the hearing briefly to?
Yeah, so let's just, I think most of reopen the meeting just to talk about an extension on, on date.
So motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Scott.
So, Mr. Glenn, so.
All those in favor?
Yeah, aye. So our next meeting is the 16th, so we're just going to need a.
Of September.
Of September. For the thing, so we'll need just an extension signed.
For the draft.
For the draft, for the 16th. All right, so just put in the file that the applicant's council is amenable to signing an extension through the 16th.
All right.
Most of we close?
Second.
Motion to reclose made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. All right, where were we?
That's it. We already did the main one, so.
Yep. So make the motion to continue for review.
So, yeah, so motion to continue this to September 16th.
All right, for review.
For review of draft and impossible vote.
All right, so the motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Attorney Glenn, thank you to you and your team. Mr. Yegation, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have finally voting the minutes for July 1st and July 8th.
And we are tabling the 8th.
Tabling the 8th, I thought so. All right, so voting minutes for July 1st. Does everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Was it the 8th of the 1st they had comments on? I emailed you comments. If they've been incorporated, I'll.
Yeah, I fixed it.
Okay.
It would be the 1st.
Thank you.
Voting on the minutes, as amended by James. Want to make that motion?
Sure. I'll move to approve the minutes as amended by me for July 1st, 2021.
Sounds good.
I'll second.
Motion was made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. We're tabling July 8th. Board administrative approval was already taken out of order and approved. Board updates, anything?
I'm just laughing. I'm so thrown off.
Meeting is early.
So the date that I, the two dates that we circulated were not good for.
People.
People.
What were they good for? Not good?
Some people were good for one and some people were only good for the other. So we didn't have everybody, so we will have to recirculate dates.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have new board members, too, to.
Yeah, what's up with that?
When will the date be?
Yeah, no, no, no. Is, they've been advertised?
Yes. And I understand that the advertisement was closed as of August 2. So I understand that they do have applicants for the two open positions.
Excellent.
Any appointments that they're making on the other boards are what, this Monday?
Probably next, right, next Monday, but I did not see.
So maybe that just missed the 30 days.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, and we do have an announcement about our assistant town council.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
So Associate Town Council, Irene Mullin, is, it's her last week. Her last day is tomorrow. I randomly bumped into her in the Superior Court Clerk's office this afternoon on, on related matters. She's leaving the town. Everyone on this board knows how much that she's assisted the board over the time that she's been here in town, both representing us in court and advising us throughout executive sessions and through emails, and she's, she will be missed. She's going on to bigger and better things up in Boston at the Supreme Judicial Court. So we wish her best of luck and best wishes.
She'll do well.
She will. She certainly will.
So how long does it usually take them to get an assistant town council again?
I have no idea.
She's still trying to get over the fact that we're done by 8:05. She, don't.
And no one else is left. We've lost the building commissioner, assistant town council, people in the department. I don't know.
All right. Anything else for board discussion?
No, sir.
Future agenda items? Seeing none?
But maybe you could just reach out and find out from Diane at the office when the actual appointments are being.
When they were actually being heard.
Yeah, just to confirm it with her.
Interviewed, sure.
In writing.
All right. No more future agenda items. Our next hearing is August 19th. See everyone then.